June sixteenth, twenty twenty two, order at six thirty P M. We do have a quorum here and this meeting is being recorded as well as televised. So the first order of business is the reorganization of the board. I will accept the motion if someone wants to make it.
Nomination?
Nomination, thank you.
I'd like to nominate Christopher Monroe as the for chairman.
I would like to second that.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Take a vote.
Lifted all eye.
Holman's eye.
Schneider, your eye?
Monroe eye.
Congratulations.
If I may?
Yes.
I've always been accustomed to saying Madam Chair. To say Mister Chair. Yeah, usually in California, they put like after the name, they put like uh he, him, pronoun, you know, pronouns, he, him and so forth. I wanted to do the same thing. Personally on behalf of myself, and I'm think I'm also definitely speaking from behalf of the board, I wanted to thank Alice Lifted up well for the service that you've done for the last couple of years. I've seen a true. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
I have seen a true transformation in the way that this board has been working and it is absolutely, a lot has to do with the work that you've done. You've spent enormous amounts of time, hours, and you've been incredibly diligent and you've spearheaded some amazing projects here. So I wish to thank you for not only the work that you've done, but for keeping us all in line and more importantly, for helping the town of Hubbardston achieve what it has through the work that it does through the planning board and through your leadership. And I think that a round of applause is okay?
Thank you very much.
My word of applause.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the work you did.
It's been, it is an honor to serve in fact. And thank you very much. We leave you with capable hands, Lafayette.
I can never possibly fill the shoes, so. I do want to add to that and that it is one of the best kept secrets in town that Alice is one of probably, not one of, probably the hardest working unpaid volunteer in government in Hubbardston.
Thank you.
So there, there are some enormous shoes that I'm stepping into and I'm never gonna fill them the same way, be a little different, but I'm gonna try my best all the time. So I thank you all for your confidence and and for the vote. So I believe we have some other seats on the board that we need to fill.
Yes, we need to have a reappointment as Erica to the alternate, alternate positions, so that's a recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Has that, has it been?
So we.
Mallory posted it, I thought.
Has it been posted? I just wanna make sure.
I'm sure she did. I don't know.
Yeah.
I got no idea.
Can you check?
Did you get any emails from her? I did not.
I did not see an email posted.
Well.
So we can't appoint her if we haven't posted it, so.
Well, I think it's a recommendation that we make, right?
Yeah, it's a recommendation either way. The select board is the appointing authority.
Recommendation.
Yeah. Oh, okay, correct.
Okay. Why she's looking that up, um we're also s- so Mallory, we appointed as clerk, but the planning board has to have a clerk. So we can make it the administrative assistant to the board, who served the role of clerk.
Oh, we can do, yeah, it would just be an alibi, which I think, which makes sense.
We can do that. Well, if we assign the land use coordinator as the role, then he or she would, when it takes over from me, would just assume it, wouldn't they?
It seems like we have to be specific by name on that. I don't think we can do that by title.
Well, we can change it.
You can change it.
Into a week, two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, we can just change it.
I mean, she's, maybe it'll be a month she's filling in or no.
Yeah, I'm filling until Lisa was first.
Okay, yeah, I think that makes sense then, if somebody wanted to make the motion.
So I'll make a motion that our administrative assistant serves clerk of the board.
I'll second that motion.
While she's here.
Uh, any discussion?
No.
I'll take a vote then.
Lifted eye.
Holman's eye.
Schneider, your eye?
Monroe eye.
You know.
No.
Yeah, the, the motion carries. What else do we need to do?
Well, she's gonna look under.
She hasn't, she sent out letters because she had some post-it.
So we gotta put it off to the next week.
Yeah, well.
But she can continue to serve under our administrative rules until her appointment's made. I checked that out.
Okay.
Alright, so we'll put that on for the next meeting, assuming you're still interested.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
We would love to have you.
Yeah.
Excellent, uh, because you'll be particularly important over the next few meetings.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
So moving down the list, uh, is there anybody about to appoint other than the clerk at the moment?
Well, there are these appointments we have to make ultimately.
Yeah, so let's, um, let's discuss those and just for, for the sake of the public, um, there's a bunch of different liaison positions that come off the planning board. For example, uh, the E D C, capital planning, C P C, and then there's a couple with the regional planning authority, where members from the planning board go and serve in those roles ex officio. For example, I did it for the E D C the previous year. I would actually like to move this to the next meeting, um, so that we can, we can put together a list of when those meetings are
Sounds good.
and try to make it easier for people to c- to commit to stuff that they know they'll be able to make it to. Because like right now, if, if you were to say, hey, who's gonna commit to the M J T C meeting, I have no sense of what their meeting schedule is, so I think we need to do our homework on that. Uh, we should all be prepared to hopefully volunteer or be nominated for something at the next meeting.
Do you have a motion for that?
No.
No.
No. You're gonna, you're gonna, next week. Okay.
Uh, any, any questions or comments on that from the board?
No.
Alright, so moving on.
Well, uh, one, one, one comment, if, if you are part of one of those groups and if you have, uh, knowledge ahead of time of when these typically meet, just to understand what the, not only the time commitment, like if it's weekly or if it's bi-weekly, once a month, et cetera, or also the date that they usually meet, that will be very helpful, just to make sure that we are, uh, creating a calendar in our own personal lives that can accommodate this here.
Yeah, you send them all to me and I'll compile them.
Yeah, I work with Mallory and Tony on that, so.
Thank you.
Alright, so if nobody has anything else on that, moving forward to public comments. Do we have any comments from the public for items that do not currently appear on the agenda? So if you're here for an agenda item, I'd like to ask you to hold on, uh, but if you're here for an item that's not on the agenda, here's your chance. Go in once. Go in twice. And we're moving on. So the next one is the acceptance of the, uh, the minutes for five twelve, I believe it was. Uh, has everybody had a chance to look at those?
Mm-hmm.
And are there any suggested revisions?
I'll make a motion to approve, then.
I'm here.
I'll second that.
May, May twelfth?
And we have a second from Bill.
I second it.
Alright, and discussion?
Who took them? They were great, they were much.
I know, well, I'm, I'm looking at Francois because normally you have about a dozen.
Yeah, Andrea. Yeah. Andrea.
Silence is golden.
Is it, is it in the?
Nope, it's the same girl, Andrea's doing them still, so she, she signed on for, uh, planning board and board of health minutes.
I don't tell her, tell her they were good.
Alright, I'll let her know.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, so let's, uh, I'll take a vote on that.
Lifted eye.
Holman's eye.
Schneider, your eye?
Monroe eye.
One quick comment on minutes, uh, and this is just for the chair to understand and know. I was personally looking for some minutes that were, I think for two thousand and twenty, I don't remember who it was, two thousand twenty, two thou- two thousand twenty-one. Most of the very previous minutes that go back to like two thousand eighteen, nineteen, they typically can be accessed via online. Many of the minutes that we have done for our current, well, the past year's, uh, uh, planning board, I have not found.
Okay.
Online, and I think that, uh, we really do need to have those available so that the public can, uh, view them.
Sure.
So just a recommendation that we also maybe make that, um, an at- uh, an item for us to follow up on.
Sure.
Thank you.
And, uh, I guess that's actually an agenda item later on too, so if, does, if anybody else have anything else to add to that, we'll skip that agenda item when it comes up on the other one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, oh, administrative. Sorry, oh.
Well, I think, I think you summed it up beautifully, so I don't know if there's anything else on.
I don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, good job.
Yes.
I guess I missed that piece. I have some other items from, about the webpage, so.
Yeah. Okay.
And we can do that later.
Well, we'll hold off on those then.
Yep.
So moving on to action items, the first one is a report on the annual town meeting and passage of the items. They passed and they passed very strongly, um, it, it wasn't close, there were only a couple votes that were against either of the items. And I guess just for the summary, uh, let's get a summary on each of the items, uh, for, and let's start with the best if you're willing to do that for Francois.
So the battery energy storage system, I think this was item twenty-three, article twenty-three. Yeah, we have, uh, we did receive an approval from the town, uh, to incorporate and include that as part of the bylaws. And B E S S stands for battery energy storage system, which at this point in time will be allowed only in commercial zoned areas that have three-phase electricity. Therefore, it is actually very limited. It's limited between High Street and for all intents and purposes, the, uh, Gardner Road cutoff, um, for the time being. Again, things can change obviously in the future, but that's really the only applicable zone.
And the solar fields.
Pardon me?
And the solar field.
And the solar fields, yes, thank you for incorporating that, but, uh, it was very important to note that we do already have a battery energy storage system, that is active in the town of Hubbardston and is part of the Williamsville, uh, solar field. To note here is, is that there is a maximum capacity that the best, uh, systems will be allowed to, um, store, that is a total of ten megawatts. There's a number of elements that are incorporated in the, uh, in the bylaw, it's quite an extensive bylaw and it was very carefully crafted over, I would say, almost a year and a half. And includes, uh, the requirements for a special permit with offsets, a minimum acreage and so forth. So, um, that's one of the reasons that I wanted to incorporate something in, in the future. We need to also make sure that we have our bylaws, uh, the, the, the most recent bylaws also, uh, online, so again, folks can, uh, folks can read that. So any questions from anybody or, uh, any comments on, on the bylaw, but I believe it, it, it passed unanimously, uh, during the, uh, during the town meeting.
Excellent, and the other two items were the Habitat for Humanity and the, um, the accessory dwelling unit, and else, would you like to comment on those?
The, actually it's Habitat for Humanity, but it was actually a, a community preservation article, um, to help with the, the hu- the house that's being built on Ragged Hill Road. It's our first habitat house in town, our first affordable housing unit in like forty years. Quite amazing, been very good, but it, it had overruns in costs and hard times for fundraising, both due to COVID. Like the wood was eleven thousand more and, yeah. So anyway, we, we had funds, C P C, they got voted in and to contribute twenty thousand to that, and I wanna say to everybody, the dedication ceremony for the Habitat House is coming Friday, not tomorrow, but a week from Friday, ten o'clock, Ragged Hill Road. If you wanna meet the, the new owner, Kira, and her family and, uh, the crew, crowd that built it, it, that should be a fun event, stop by. Accessory dwelling unit was an attempt by our whole board here to clean up what were three different types of units allowed to, you could add to your house, housekeeping, in-law, and an apartment unit. We put them all into an accessory dwelling unit and then we put, uh, we eliminated some conditions, so now you do not have to be related to the person that lives in that apartment and you can also rent it, which you couldn't do prior, and there, and there's a lot of, um, other restrictions we've put on, size, occupants and so on. So you can read it, it's not very long, it's about, uh, one page, but if you're thinking of doing it, you gotta read it. That's it.
Well, thank you both very much for the updates and, and thank you for the relentless work you did on both of those items to get them put together.
Mister Chairman, if I may, I don't know if you know, I just actually finished a ten-year term on the Board of Habitat for Humanity. I was president for three and a half of those years and, uh, just wanted to thank all of you, I mean, that's tremendous that you helped us out with that. It's an amazing organization. If you do have time to go to the dedication and, and bring your kids with you, it's, you know, I bring, I brought my two girls to a lot of them so that they can see that a lot of families in North Central Mass and the twenty-eight communities that our affiliate serves, the way that some of those people live, it's, it's heartbreaking. And, uh, to be able to help the families and, and the support of the town is just tremendous, so thank you all very much.
And it was this lady here that.
Spearheaded this here.
She did a lot of that.
Yeah.
I could go on for hours about the, the stories and the families and, you know, it's, it's really incredible work, so thank you very much.
It was kind of.
This is very long.
Yeah.
Thanks, yeah, all of us participating, yeah.
Well. Thank you very much.
Come if you can, you guys, ten o'clock Friday.
So let's move, uh, down the agenda here, the, um, first substantive item is public hearing on the scenic road, uh, application for the tree on Cruz Road. So, what do I have to do? I'm gonna read it on this.
Sir, open it up.
I just declared, alright, so, uh, I am declaring the public herein open for this. And just to give everybody a brief summary, uh, we have a scenic road bylaw in this town and the purpose of it in the bylaw, and I will quote it for you. The purpose of a scenic by- road bylaw is to help the town maintain and enhance its rural small-town character by ensuring that work done to trees and stone walls on the public right-of-way of scenic roads is done in a way that helps preserve the scenic, historic and aesthetic characteristics of the public right-of-way. Uh, and just to give everybody a sense of what we look for, it's actually right in the rule of a list of things that we're supposed to consider when looking at this. And that list, and I'll just run through it quickly for the public's benefit, is, uh, contribution of trees and/or stone walls to scenic beauty, age and historic significance of road, trees and stone walls, features of the road such as sur- surface pavement with bridges, public safety, local residential traffic patterns and overall volume of congestion, compensatory actions proposed such as tree and stone wall replacement, functional importance and urgency of repair, maintenance, reconstruction of pavement, additional evidence contributed by abutters, town agencies and interested parties, recreational use of the road, preservation of natural resources and historic resources, scenic and aesthetic characteristics, environmental values, other planning information, uh, existence or absence of reasonable alternatives and applicant's reasons for consideration. So that is the purpose and that is the standard that we look at and there's obviously a whole bunch there that's going on. So do we have somebody here who speaks to the application?
So, yeah, so I can talk just a little bit 'cause on behalf of the D P W, so this application was given to the planning board on behalf of the D P W for the purpose of removing, uh, large, I believe, oak that's across from Five Crus Road for the purpose of lining the road. We have Jeff Work here, who is our tree warden, so you can take it from here.
I don't have a lot to add, I mean, the tree basically comes out into the road and Travis of the highway department wanted to remove the tree to facilitate the road, road improvements and drainage in that area. It's an otherwise healthy tree, a little bit of damage around the root flare and around the base of the tree, but, um, it is impeding, I think, uh, safety and drainage.
We have some pictures here.
I can say, being on the police department all the years, I have, uh, many accidents, people hitting that, that tree and they removed the last one, the one closest to Williamsburg last year, uh, National Grid took it down, so they got a stump there and this one, so when you go to widen the road, it's gonna be a lot safer for people. Make a big difference.
Can they take the stumps down a bit too?
Well, if you're gonna put the road there, you gotta move the stump through.
Yeah.
Yeah, that last tree was done, because that tree was actually splitting in half.
Yeah, it was very dangerous, I was there when they took it down.
Yeah.
It's a good thing they took it down when they did.
Yeah.
National Grid will be taking this one down too with the help of the D P W. I think they're taking down the top part, Travis, then?
They, yeah, he, that might be something he's arranged, but otherwise the town's taking care of it.
Here's the colored pictures for anybody who didn't get a chance to get it and.
Yeah, I drove out to look.
Do a site visit, and I also.
I was driven by that many times.
I also drove, uh, to take a look for it just for this.
It's a beautiful tree, it's kinda sad, but it is about a foot into the road.
It is beautiful.
Big tree, it's massive, yeah.
Thanks for sharing.
Alright, anybody else, uh, who can speak on it?
Yeah, just, uh, Ed Blanchard, twenty-three East Common Pond Road. I don't live on Cruz Road, but I travel up there because I have many friends that live on the road. And yes, the tree does, uh, stick into the road so that it would be, if you met two cars exactly where that tree is, it would be very difficult to, uh, have those two cars pass safely. And from a plowing standpoint, uh, you know, there's no way you can plow that road without having to swoop around that tree. And, uh, another observation is that there are many other trees in that area that will keep that road scenic. And I think it's a, a good thing that the planning board votes to, uh, approve this tree to be taken down.
Thank you. Uh, anybody else?
Quick question, what is the timeline for the removal of the tree once it gets approved by us? Do you?
Uh, that's entirely up to the highway department, I don't know what they're.
But it'll be this year in the summer.
Oh, I believe so, they have, they wanna.
They wanna rush it because of the bridge at the bottom of the hill on Williamsburg?
Yes, needs to be replaced.
They're gonna start replacing that, so they're gonna have this road paved and done before that happens, so.
Okay, so it's, it's.
I think Travis had choose that, we share equipment with other towns and he said we're getting it soon.
Mm-hmm.
Very good, excellent.
I'll make that motion to approve this permit, is, that we moved that tree on Cruz Road.
Listen, do we have to, do we do that first or do we close the public hearing first?
Usually it's closed, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we have to close them.
Yeah.
I jumped.
Uh, anybody wanna make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make the motion that we close this public hearing, uh, for the scenic road for removal of the tree on Cruz Road.
Second.
Alright, having a motion and a second, uh, any discussion on closing the hearing? Then let's have a vote on that.
Holman's eye.
Schneider, your eye?
Lifted eye.
Lifted eye.
As I'm closing it.
Yeah, this is closing, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will now make that motion.
Excellent.
I will second that motion.
Thank you, and discussion?
Can I make an a friendly amendment, just say for public safety purposes, approve it?
I, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Or in consideration of public safety.
I think that makes a lot of sense, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, do we need to vote on that amendment?
No, it's friendly.
No.
Okay, there we go.
She's friendly.
And, uh.
Well, I think because you have this criteria, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay.
I'll make that.
And, uh, discussion? Yes, I'll, uh, I'll talk about it, I, looking at the criteria and hearing everybody saying that about it, it is a stunningly beautiful old tree, but I think we have to do it, in my opinion. It, it does, it's in the roadway, i- it's about a foot into the roadway, it's not on the edge, it's in it, so. Uh, any further discussion? Alright, well, let's have a vote.
Lifted eye.
I think we are.
Oh, okay.
Holman's eye.
Schneider, your eye?
Monroe eye.
You know.
Alright, so the application is approved.
I'll make that decision and get it over to you to review and then usually you sign it.
Okay.
And we'll get to Travis.
Yeah, and we'll, uh, we'll plan on Tuesdays and Thursdays like we talked about for that stuff.
So this is my last week, next week's my last.
Okay, well, that'll be.
And that'll, that'll be here on Tuesday nights, um, but we can plan other times to talk because I'm working nine to three now for my new job, so.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Alright, so moving down the list is the public hearing for fifty-six Gardner Road.
I have a good news.
Thank you.
So I declare that public hearing open.
Do you wanna read the, me to read the notice?
Uh, yes, please.
The Hubbardston Planning Board report to hold a public hearing Thursday, June sixteenth at six thirty P M at Comaham Lane Street. Public hearing will provide public forum and review of a bond special permit application submitted by Paper Crane Provision L S E for property owned fifty-six Gardner Road for construction of three interior rooms at existing facility for processing of cannabis.
Alright, so I'm gonna give the applicant the floor first to talk about what you're asking for.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone, Patrick McCarty, McCarty Engineering, Bowie Bertold is with me from Paper Crane Provisions. We submitted a special permit request on their behalf on April twenty-first that the, um, board accepted after some correspondence back and forth between, uh, myself, Bowie, um, and Bill from Places, is the planning board's consultant. So we submitted the initial application packet, Bowie submitted a follow-up memorandum on their letterhead, responded to some questions about the, uh, more further explanation of the process, and then we submitted on May twelfth, a response to comment letter that, um, we tried to provide like a more simplified explanation. So Paper Crane is currently operating under a special permit for an outdoor cultivation facility. They are fully operational and C C C compliant on that and, uh, Bowie's working seven days a week. As, as many of you are aware, there's an existing building, uh, that's on the site. And so this application simply proposes the construction of three rooms within the existing building to, um, essentially ice wash the cannabis and then dry it and press it and package it, and Bowie's the expert on that, so I'll let him explain that in detail to the board as, as much as the board desires. Um, the important highlight says there's no exterior work required for this, no site improvements, no parking improvements, drainage, nothing of that sort are required for this application. And there's also no new employees required, it's the existing employees that are working on the outdoor cultivation that would then take the product inside, wash it again with ice, um, drain off the water that's excess, that's really no different than say washing the lettuce that you buy at the supermarket before you make a salad and then, um, dry it, press it and package it. So no new employees, no new site improvements, very simple interior, uh, special permit request to package essentially, process and package the cannabis that they're growing there. There are, there are future plans that will be, you know, we're working towards, um, that would involve site work and that would be the subject of yet another special permit application when we get to that point. But for this evening, we're just asking the board's consideration on this. And I guess I'll turn it over to Bowie to give you a little bit better technical explanation of what they're proposing to do.
Sure, first off, are there any specific questions that anybody has about what product this is, what, what, I mean, I'm.
Well, for the, for the benefit of the public, because there'll be people watching this, uh, online and on TV that didn't necessarily hear our previous discussions.
Sure.
Uh, can you just give, um, a brief overview of the bubble process?
Yes, well, essentially Patrick weighed it out, um, um, pretty, pretty clearly, but basically a lot of the cannabis that we're growing at fifty-six Gardner Road is gonna be, um, used for what's called biomass. Biomass is basically a byproduct level of cannabis that doesn't pass the microbial testing limit, or fails the micro- microbial testing limits of flour that would say go direct to consumer to either be smoked or, or used, however they want. A lot of outdoor cannabis, because there is pollen and dust blowing around, um, will go to these, um, different extractable products. So the product that we're gonna make is basically a, it's a, it's a rosin is what they call it and essentially you place the cannabis in a large, if you've ever seen a, basically a Hobart mixing bowl for a, a large-scale bakery, it's, it's very similar to that, it's like a big Hobart mixing bowl, you fill it with ice and water, you turn it on and it spins. As it spins, the trichomes, which are the little, um, sort of colored, uh, resin heads that hold the cannabinoids, hit a certain temperature, they fall off the cellulose and collect in the bottom of the bowl. That bowl has a drain on the bottom and that drains off, it pulls the resin heads through, the micron screen, three micron screens, and you're left with a finished product that you then just simply air dry and then put it in a small press and it turns it into something that looks similar to honey. This is the product that a lot of product manufacturers desire for making edibles, number one. They, they like this product in particular because it's made without chemicals, so it has a lot of the, um, a lot of the terpenes, a lot of the flavor from the actual plant, um, so it's called, uh, it's basically just called live rosin. That's the product that we're gonna be making. We're, the reason we're making it is, um, as product manufacturers have been contacting us, um, for, uh, you know, basically biomass or biomass products, this is the product that most of them desire. It's very simple to make, it's, uh, like Patrick said, there's no additional solvents, it's ice, water, you're left with basically the stalks and, um, sugar leaves of the plant, which all of the trichomes are rinsed off of that. It's just a green mush, we have a big compost pile where we're currently composting all of our stalks, leaves, and it's also a worm farm and, you know, it's just a, a big live compost pile, it will go there. I mentioned in the, in the letter initially about this process that we do a lot of water collection on the property in general. So this water will actually be used then and to make, uh, as a base for our compost teas, which will go out either into the field or into some of our propagated plants. It's all regenerative, very, um, clean and, um, you know, emphasize no additional chemicals, solvents, anything, just a small press, water and ice. So that's the, um, that's the overview, if there's any specific questions, uh, feel free.
You will be creating the, uh, um, or creating the ice at the location or will you be bringing ice in?
We're, we're gonna have a, a five hundred pound a day ice maker installed.
Okay.
Yeah, it's basically like, uh, y- you know, uh, any, um, busy bar would have two. Um yeah, it's basically like a y- you know, uh any um busy bar would have two.
Sure.
So this is basically one of those, you know, just a big ice chest and maker. Um that's really the only uh like I guess you would say large piece of equipment besides the mixing bowl that um.
Yes. If I may, just another uh a couple of more follow-up questions.
Sure.
The uh amount of water that you're gonna be uh utilizing for this here obviously is proportional to the crop, I'm assuming that you have.
Sure.
Do you have kind of an estimate in terms of how much water you're produce, are you consuming here?
Sure, so the the actual vessel that we're mixing in, which uh we can you can do this about twice a day, just in terms of having one unit, so
Okay.
it it at the most it holds sixty gallons.
Oh, small quantity.
It's 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 very small, um and again, like you know, the the return on the amount of cannabis that you put in is of the rosin you gets pretty high, so these vessels aren't very large.
Okay.
Um you're just, you know, stripping everything off, so it's it's not much water.
And you do this r- right after harvest, right?
We're gonna do it immediately after harvest, that's right, with a large port like, uh you know, large section of the field that um you know is basically stuff that is gonna be utilized for this specifically.
So would it be fair to say that this processing that you're doing will have sort of like a timeline that will not extend into much farther than September, October timeline, which is when you typically finish your harvesting, or?
Well, we can only process, you know, a certain amount at a time, and we we will be having a pretty large harvest this year, so we are still gonna be drying and carrying large portions of that and processing processing it as we go.
But this is not a year-round activity, this is.
Oh, oh yeah, it will be, it will be, it will, you know, um once we're
Oh, it is, okay.
once the we have it, you know, it's happening at fifty-six Gardner Road, this will be a product that we'll offer to man- to product manufacturers on a regular basis.
I I'm just thinking that, I mean, you your greenhouse is not, I mean, are you are you already growing something in a in a greenhouse environment or not?
We were, yep.
You you are?
Yep.
Okay, and so as a result of that, you will be producing ca- uh cannabis uh plants or marijuana plants during the during a much longer period of time then?
Just into the hoop house, yep.
Okay.
It's about nine hundred square feet of canopy, it's 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 small, yep.
Okay, okay. Uh no more questions on my end.
We got a couple of questions we can't forget about short of the public out there, but um
Sure, sure.
you I we have never, two things that we didn't discuss prior to this is um hours of operation
Yeah.
and what is the packaging, what's involved in the packaging?
So the packaging, it depends on the finished product, um if you're selling this in bulk, right now it's traded basically in mason jars. Um it's, you know, the you it's sold by the leader. Um so that's if we were gonna be uh packaging it ourselves, which we might do at some point, it would be uh packaged in one of these rooms, it's the first room at the rear of the building, it's called the pl- clean flour and packaging room. So all of our direct-to-consumer flour, which is basically the stuff that's will be either smoked directly, sold in small quantities, and then um if we were going to say uh s- you can sell this stuff in smaller amounts, in say half grams, single grams, five gram packs. Uh we are more like, I don't have the manpower or really bandwidth to get into packaging like that, so this is really just intended right now as a um wholesale item for other product manufacturers. Again, it's mostly used for edibles, but some some people also uh can turn into vape cartridges as well.
And hours, if you have a busy time, are we mostly?
Um right now, I mean, it's, you know, it's it's just farm hours, like I'm there uh I'm I'm there at about five thirty, six every day, and I leave around seven thirty, eight. Um as uh you know, as we get into the season and to harvest, I mean, it turns in just like every other, it's just farming, it's around the clock, you know, you just it it so um in terms of hours of operation, if we were there, we we wouldn't be making any noise or running engines or anything, but um you know, as you're basically it it depends on what we're talking about, if we're talking about during harvest, during planting, just like anything else, you're planting windows, so you look for certain moisture, humidity, cool, you know, uh cool days, cloudy days, if you're putting plants out, um those days you push late. You know, um I was there just pushing late the other night, you know, well past eight o'clock, I doubt anybody knew I was there. So I mean, the hours of operation are are, you know, really we're have a very small crew, there's just six of us there right now, and you know, I could probably use like fifteen people, but we're getting it all done, but it's it's running into late hours, um you know, if we uh if so I guess, yeah, I guess that's.
So if we, but just for the sake of discussion.
Sure.
Because we have put ours like on the storage locker place next door to you, and uh if we said um between the hours of five A M and ten P M,
Yep.
is that, did that be sufficient, or you already see yourself earning the minimum?
Sure, I mean, it's not, I mean, so that would be, I'm like, what would be um what, I'm just not sure would be considered operating, would that be, I have to leave, basically vacate the property, not just sit there and do like office work, which I often have to do?
No, would be the processing part of it.
Oh, absolutely, oh, no, 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 that's that's standard, um that's regular hours, sure.
I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but it seems to me if we
Yeah.
we try to tailor the hours to what the people need, so like with the storage lockers, you know, there's weekend times and there's other times, and the noise and the level of disruption.
Sure.
And it obviously if we go on to open the shop, it's gonna be more of an issue, right?
Right, oh, of course.
But um but I but I don't know, do you?
Don't we already have hours specified in the original special permit? I don't think we would wanna vary from that.
Yes. Yes, special per- if I may, Mr. Chairman, special permit condition number eleven, the hours of operation of the facility shall be limited from Saturday so I'm sorry, Sunday to Saturday from dawn to dusk. During harvest periods, extended hours may be necessary and accepted for a limited timeframe during harvest periods, not to exceed two months' time in a calendar year. Hours of operation shall not be modified without the consent of the planning board, and the s- as the site plan granting authority, the building commissioner shall have authority to enforce these requirements.
I guess the difference is we're talking about something that is indoors, and if anything, should probably be.
Right.
Right, and it's a different special permit.
But it's still under the umbrella of the hours, though, I mean, they're they're operating under the special permit that was granted. And so the question I think that we have in front of the b- board right now is is this being an indoor activity, uh does it need to have different types of hours because of the fact that this is going to be potentially doing, being done beyond the dawn to dusk timeline, and that's the question, I think, to you and for us to he- here in this video.
Yeah.
It's 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 not going to be, we're not gonna be processing there around the clock, um this would.
It's not around the clock, it's between dusk and dawn is when you have an hour hours of operation.
Yeah.
That's a nice setting.
Sure. The question is, is are you going to be doing things during outside of that period, even if you're doing work, say for example, in the processing here for this?
Yeah, you might be inside.
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is a separate, a special permit.
Is it, think about, think about the harvest season, when um.
I'm sorry?
It's a separate special permit, this is separate, yeah.
I I understand, so but but the.
So we could put new hours if we're just processing.
Yeah.
Precisely, so my point always is that if we are going to be putting hours, we cannot just simply look at the hours that you have previously and just simply say, well, we're assuming it's the same.
Right.
We need to specify for us what those potential hours are.
Right. Yep. Yeah. So I I think five A M to ten P M as was proposed is re- more reasonable.
Completely, that's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
And is it?
Not any other comment I would like to make, if we get a complaint, we can open this back up again, correct, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Sure.
Understanding it's not just potential noise, but it's also traffic, right? If you have like crews of ten, fifteen people suddenly coming in or things of that nature, I mean, th- those are the types of things that we want you to be aware of.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Sure. We're gonna have that. Alright, so let's uh jump over to Mr. Murray.
Just on this same theme, do you want days of the week? Like Sunday, processing shall not occur on a Sunday?
Or none? Se- seven days would work for me, um right now, since we are so um sort of scantly staffed. Uh it looks like it, you know, it's gonna be seventy eight, seven days for at least me and my two other full-time partners for the foreseeable future. Um that could be pro- you know, a good part of the next year or so, I would say.
And and the work that's occurring inside, I mean, the the as as Bowie explained, the the ice wash is not a very large machine, and the ice machine, I mean, everybody stood, I'm sure everybody in this room has stood next to an ice machine, so that noise within the room is certainly not gonna carry outside of the building that would be a nuisance to any of others.
Nor the disposal of the water or anything of that nature?
Right.
Not at all.
Right, okay.
Miss Murray, any additional questions?
Just the original special permit said that no trucking shall occur on Sundays.
Just called.
And I don't know that, you you haven't really discussed the the export and shipping and how that'll modify any operations at the farm.
Well, all the um s- it's a good point, all of the, most of the shipping and uh movement of the cannabis products is all done by um a licensed cannabis transporter. Uh we haven't used one yet, we're hoping to use one soon, but they um I can't imagine they've, I'm I I'm fine with it, uh no trucking, I'm s- s- stick into that, sure.
On weekends, so Monday through Friday.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah, business hours, it's it's fine.
Normal business hours, Monday through Friday.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions from the board or Mr. Murray? Any questions or concerns from the public? Yes.
So is it my understanding that the the product you make will be commercially shipped to other people who will process that into a product?
Correct.
So this is not a uh situation where if this permit were granted, that uh it would turn into retail sales at a later standpoint, but that would be addressed by a separate
That's correct.
special permit at that time?
Correct, that's correct, yep. This is just as a, this is to make a product that is sold wholesale to other manufacturers.
Is you planning the future to have a uh a retail site in others?
It is, yep.
Thank you for being honest.
Any further questions or comments from the public, the board, or Mr. Murray?
One last time.
Yes.
The part of this was, if we're gonna make and Bill has a, is is I just, it was very clear that what's being processed here is the cannabis grown on the property.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's important to put in a special permit.
Yes.
You're not bringing anything in from the adjoining properties that are in other towns or
Yeah. We're not, no.
or other facilities?
No.
Nor do you have any other facilities that are beyond the ones here in Haverston?
I do not.
Okay.
So what would be the proper wording of this motion that we're talking about?
I think it could be a trial.
I believe Ellis, I believe Ellis has a proposed one for
Okay, let's.
Okay, so.
for for when we, for after we close the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Um before we close it, any other commentary from Mr. Murray?
May may we see the plan? Is I, thank you.
Oh, certainly. There was, there should have been a copy in here.
I do mind if I pass this along?
Oh, no, we submitted eight copies.
No, I understand, but uh I just wanted to see if there's any changes in here. So the 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 highlighted in dark areas are the ones for the processing.
Yes, those are just the three rooms, correct.
The cold room, the dryer press, rosin, production, clean power, okay.
I do remember seeing the plan, I just don't miss it a lot.
And There there, these are three rooms, one room that is fifteen by ten, another room that's fifteen by seventeen and a half, and another room that is fifteen, a- again, another fifteen by ten, right?
Sounds like.
Correct.
Are these are these rooms totally enclosed, or are there windows?
Totally enclosed.
Totally enclosed.
Totally enclosed, okay.
Security.
C C C regulations don't allow windows.
Well, I want I wanted to make sure that that's indeed the case, I didn't see anything to that effect here.
Mm-hmm.
And just for the benefit of the public, because it is a concern the public frequently has, and it was very deep in the documents, um is it your belief that the odor mitigation system that you currently have in place is gonna be sufficient, this is dealing with an additional?
I'm gonna be stating the obvious, the rosin that you're producing is non-toxic by by its o- by its nature, I mean, you obviously, it gets incorporated into an edible, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Uh is there a toxicity level if potentially ingested in great quantities?
Um I'm sure it would uh probably
Not make you feel very well, but it's no nothing uh you you wouldn't result in a hospital or
Yeah, it would sure be a very strong experience.
Yeah.
there's there's, as far as I'm aware, there's not there's not a an overdose on record from cannabis related, 'cause we've we've worked on several of these projects, from cultivation facilities, dispensaries, um extraction laboratories, and um I've had obviously a lot of discussions with all of our different clients, and 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 you know, as far as I'm I'm aware, not Googling it or anything like that, there's there's never been an overdose on.
I'm asking only just from a health perspective, should an accident occur, I'm not saying that somebody does it unintentionally, but should an accident occur on location
Yeah.
as to whether or not our health professionals here in town need to be aware of something like this here and how to handle this here, that is different, I mean, I'm sure that it may have occurred, but
Yeah.
our own health personnel here, most of them are very well-trained, but just wanna make sure if you can provide us with any kind of information that may be potentially related to um the departments that would potentially have to transport somebody if if that were to occur, okay?
Sure.
And again, it's just bus and suspenders.
Yep.
Yeah, it it is, it is important to note for the public uh that this isn't a controlled facility, so you c- you can't just walk up and get into it.
Yeah.
Um you have to be, yeah, yeah, you have to be.
Secure. I I I'm I'm also concerned about the personnel that is there.
Oh, understood, understood, so you know, that that limits the, you know, to the six or so people that are there as employees.
Yeah.
Um but nobody from the public, this isn't open to the public, it isn't a dispensary, it isn't retail, so they can't walk up and get into this facility?
We understand that. Mm-hmm.
And and even the dispensaries, you can't walk up and get into them.
No, I we understand that.
So, so it, I understand your concern, and and I think that's something that Bowie and I should look into, and if there's anything we can provide the first responders with, we're we're happy to do that, um but it is a pretty low probability occurrence, because of the because of the nature of it being controlled.
I I I just wanna make sure that we understand what the risk is, and if the risk does not exist, then that's fine, but if the risk does exist, that we be aware of it
Mm-hmm.
and that our health our health first responders are aware of it too.
Absolutely.
Good point.
I should also note that just like uh finished dry packaged cannabis, this product will also be stored in our vault, which is extremely secure and you know, not accessible by even my employees.
I I appreciate that, I just think that the way, and again, I'm I'm not familiar with that product, but I have to assume that there is a lot more concentration of certain chemicals in the product that you are proposing on creating here, which is a manufacturer product versus a plant product.
Uh, Mr. Murray?
So would it be fair to say that if we asked you to develop a material safety data sheet like required by OSHA and provide that to the Board of Health and to the Fire Department, that wouldn't be a burden?
Um yes and no, ye- yes, uh yes, I'm ha- yes, I'm happy to put something together for the Board of Health and the first responders,
Yes.
but a a material data safety sheet would be something that would go with like a hazardous chemical, you know?
Correct, yeah.
Uh and even from aerosols to solvents to paint, hydraulic oil, all that stuff, yeah, so I I don't.
You could you could call it something different.
Yeah, we're we're not asking for, I I personally am not asking for that, I don't know if other members of the boards are, but I'm just simply asking you to provide us with some
documentation, I prefer a loser word than a material data safety sheet.
documentation and.
And and we don't need a material safety data sheet, I was in Chiag州 for many years, but I don't believe we need it for this product, this process.
Okay, about a first responder responding.
Information sheet.
Correct, and please, I mean, what is important for us also here i- is that uh when you're documenting this here, please provide the source of that information.
Yeah. Absolutely.
What I'm going with this here is is I I I do not want to have, you know, the Google anecdotal information, but
Certainly.
true information that can be brought back and it can be potentially validated.
Certainly, we'll put that together.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly, thank you.
Would would the rosin even burn if you weren't actively holding a flame against it? But I don't, does it burn independently?
No, 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 uh no, it's it's basically a thick, it's like honey, it's like the the thick viscosity of honey, you know.
Yeah.
But it's liquid form, yeah.
Right. Right, any any further questions on this? Alright, so let's talk about this procedurally a little bit, and how do we wanna proceed with this?
Okay, so my thinking, I was gonna make this motion, which I've kind of written up and I can give to you, but it would it would be our motion, and then you would have to write a decision, which we would have to also approve incorporating it, right?
Right.
So I guess to Bowie, um if we if we were to approve it tonight, we don't meet again till a week, we decide that. To have it signed, is that, do you need it in instantly, or a week, two weeks, okay?
Two weeks is okay.
So we can review it and you can distribute it ahead of time, alright, alright, so that's the process, so I'll make a motion, I move that the planning board grant a special permit.
Wait, hold on, we need to.
Uh no, we need to get out of the.
Close.
Oh, we have, sorry, you're right.
We need to close the hearing, yep.
I'll make that motion to close, there you go.
I am seconding the motion that we close the uh special permit uh for fifty-six Gardner Road as presented by Mr. Bowie.
Yes.
Uh before we do that, was there anybody online with their hand up?
I had not somebody with my chat.
Oh, good point.
We still have no hand up.
Okay, okay, yes.
Okay, so I have seconded the motion.
Alright, in that case, I will, any discussion? Uh let's. Uh, let's have a vote.
LeDoni.
Holman's eye.
Steiger eye.
Monroe eye.
Does, is Erica?
You're, you can vote on this.
Erica eye.
And the motion carries to close the public hearing.
I'll check my motion?
Absolutely.
Okay, I move that the planning board grant a special permit to allow Paper Crane Provisions LLC, correct, to process cannabis grown on the property located at fifty-six Gardner Road within the existing building at that location and to create three interior rooms for that purpose, using the ice water extraction process described in the application and to have place's associates prepare a draft decision granting the special permit on these terms and conditions and others contained in the application and include hours of operation. Thank you.
As well as.
As, yeah, if I may, through the chair, and also to include a first responder information sheet.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And to include a first responder information sheet.
Thank you for providing that.
Thank you.
Don't get through this a few times.
No, yeah, yeah.
No trucking on weekends, weekdays only during normal business hours.
Correct, during no, no business hours. And that the hours of operations, did we talk about the hours of operations, I think? Okay, you have that.
Yes.
Five AM to ten PM.
Okay, thank you.
Then we'll have to give a copy of that to Mallory.
Give it to Mallory and she can type, we'll send it to Bill. But you're gonna, we need a second.
Excellent.
Alright, a second.
I'll make the second.
Alright, any, any discussion?
Without motion.
Alright, not hearing any discussion, let's have a vote.
LeDoni.
Holman's eye.
Steiger eye.
Erica eye.
Monroe eye. And the vote carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I wanna say to you Bowie, as most of you, uh, thank you for presenting information in a clear, concise manner, not just for us, but also for the public that is hopefully listening to this here. It's really good to hear that we have a good relationship with you.
Fantastic, okay.
Yes, thank you very much. I know it's uh sometimes difficult having to do the same question three times, but the public hasn't necessarily listened to every meeting, so
Sure.
we, we very much appreciate you being willing to go through it.
I also wanted to extend to you guys an invitation, if anybody is ever interested in what we're doing and come by and see the farm and see sort of what we view as our best practices, you know, we're actually working on uh, uh, the organic version certification that you can get in the state. And then things are going well, the farm is looking amazing, the property is, well, you know, having driven by it for so many years, some of you, and if you would wanna come by and check it out now, um, it's been quite a transformation and you're welcome to. Just shoot me an email, like I said, we're there seven days, um, come by for the tour, look around, um, anytime, sure.
Thank you.
We'd like to thank you.
Thanks, Bowie. Appreciate it. Yep, appreciate it.
Great.
That thing very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Alright.
You too.
And thank you again for working with us, Ted.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for your service.
Oh, welcome.
Alright.
Thank you.
For all that time.
I miss it.
Yep.
My uh.
Ten, ten years, oh, she's fantastic.
My smart.
Yeah.
And she pretty exactly during.
She's, uh, uh, tomorrow and getting my, and Mallory, and I'm getting, um, I'll have a drone shot in the next like ten days.
So we are.
You have a card. You have a card for the bio mode.
Yeah, Bowie would have one.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, after breaking.
Give a card, yeah.
You know what, I actually, last part out, um, somebody just over a while ago, but uh, my name's Bowie, by the way, hi, nice luck, man.
We'll come back to it.
Is Tom Johnson on?
Oh, Paul, he's on five.
Amy. Ed Blinch.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
So this, this, uh, this is.
Alright, so.
And I have contact information I can get over to you.
He didn't get the stuff, he might.
No, he didn't, but we're on to D anyways.
I know, but thinking of what we've got done, okay.
Alright, so we're moving on to D on the agenda, uh, which is uh the accepta- or potential acceptance of the application for a special permit from Vertex.
Sorry, guys.
And uh, just as a, a matter of background for the public and for the gallery, this is, this is not the public hearing. This is a meeting to determine whether or not their application is complete. So uh, we will gladly hear your comments, but please try to remember the scope of this meeting and that it is to determine whether or not the application is complete and not to make a decision on the merits of the application.
Did you see in correspondence or some email and consent of the test?
I did, um, and. Just so you know.
It's discriminating.
Yeah, well, I can.
You wanna log in?
I am logged in.
To Zoom? You are, to Zoom?
Oh, I am not logged into Zoom.
You're looking at the documents.
Just bear with us while we deal with the technology for a moment here, please.
Zoom's done soon, isn't it? Like July fifteenth, I think.
Yeah.
Then we all have to meet in person and when does that change over finally, if we decide?
I think July fifteenth.
Yeah, well. So, yeah, I guess let's go into the correspondence.
Okay.
Uh, so we did receive um, uh, a piece of correspondence to the planning board, uh, specifically asking some questions related to the balloon test, uh, and the way it was, um, it was executed. And we'll talk about that briefly, but um, does anybody have any objection to adding that in because it does address procedurally? Discussing.
No objection, right.
No.
Uh, you don't have any paper copy of it, do you?
I don't have paper copy of it, no, but I have it in here. Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, sure.
Alright, so um, this is an email that we got from, and I'm gonna put your last name.
That's fine, oh, Plord, it's Plord.
The case, Plord, okay.
Oh, you're here?
Yes, Sarah May, sorry.
Uh, and in that case, we're gonna skip the email and we'll just have you provide comments.
Yeah. Sure.
Um.
But I'm, um, you did read it beforehand?
Yes, we did. Yes, uh, we're, we're, since you're here, we're gonna have the applicant talk first though.
Okay. Okay.
So we'll, we'll come back to you, we won't forget you.
Okay.
So. Um.
You can introduce himself.
Yeah, uh, is the applicant there and can you introduce himself and talk a little bit about the project and where we're at?
I can't be part of this.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, you actually need to move to the gallery, so.
Yeah, gallery.
Sorry, Bill is in the water.
Everybody, uh, everyone here, we okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, great, thanks. Uh, my name is Tom Johnson. I'm an engineer with Proterra Design Group, uh, where if you're on behalf of Vertex Towers. Attorney for Matt Perizzi is, uh, I see that he's logged in, he's kind of got uh triple booked, so he may or may not uh jump on if, if uh, if he gets a chance, but for the purposes, I'll, I'll do most of the talking. Um, yeah, as you mentioned, Vertex Towers submitted an application for a special permit for, uh, to construct a, um, a lattice cell tower. Um, that, uh, um, in response to that, the town's, um, had, uh, uh, the, the engineer take a, a look at that, they provided some comments, um, as far as completeness for the application. Um, within the past couple of days or so, Attorney Perizzi has submitted a supplemental response to those comments. Um, I believe your engineer, uh, Mr. Bill Murray's had a chance to take a look at those. Our hope tonight was that, um, with that supplemental information, the board would consider, um, voting on completeness of the application and consider moving forward with scheduling the public hearing.
Alright, thank you for that summary. Uh, Mr. Murray, um, would you please speak if you've had an opportunity to review the application and whether or not you feel it is in a state that we can accept it?
So I haven't been able to go through the hundred pages uh in its entirety, but I did glance through it. And I do believe that what I consider to be the fatal flaws on the original application, where not all the property owners were listed as co-applicants, and some other items, uh, have been addressed. They still have not provided the planning board drainage calculations. And I don't agree, uh, with some of the summarizations that they've made in their application materials, but I think that the what has been submitted is sufficient to say that it is substantially complete. And we normally deal with these kinda debatable issues in the public hearing process. So I would like to recommend that the planning board determine the application is substantially complete, understanding that the applicant knows they all have drainage calculations. Uh, and I'd like you to vote to accept it and move forward so that we can get into the meaningful debate that probably needs to occur.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and from the board, any, um, any questions to either the applicant or Mr. Murray um, about the completeness of the application, focusing that this is a procedural meeting and not the substantive one?
None from my end.
No, I read it. I think he addressed a lot of the questions, actually.
Alright, uh, and questions and concerns from the public? Once again, this is a procedural meeting, yes, but.
I know it's a procedural meeting just for the application and not for, um, what will come up later on. But the notice that was sent to the people of Hubbardston, um, didn't state that it was for the town of Hubbardston. It was cited for some other community. The public notice that was sent out to the balloon test was not correct. And therefore, a lot of people may not have gone to the balloon test site. Uh, the balloon test site, I would comment that, you know, uh, it's different doing a balloon test site in the summertime when all the trees are out than it is in the wintertime when it may be more visible. Uh, my personal comment would be, and I don't know whether this is appropriate for this particular hearing or future hearings, that the applicant would provide us as a community with different sites that were possible for them to erect this tower and some of those sites, uh, being on Hubbardston Town property.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I don't know, and uh, did the ap- was the applicant able to hear that?
Uh, yep, I, I think I did.
Yep, uh, do you have parts of that you would like to address?
Um, maybe just ask a follow-up question about specifics of, of, um, what information was missing in, as stated, in the balloon float, um, advertisement or, or, or public notice.
The notice contained the wrong town in one place.
Yeah, in, in several places, it did say town of Hubbardston, but it said that the planning board of the town of, was it Holbrook or?
Hillsborough. Hillsborough.
Hillsborough, uh, was, um, was going to be doing it. Uh, and we presented that, um, that issue to Attorney Perizzi, uh, and, um, he made the judgment call for himself that that was, um, uh, immaterial. Uh, we did not opine on that as a board, um, because we did not believe it was proper for us.
It did, but did it say Hubbardston i- in a number of other places as well?
It did say Hubbardston and other places.
And, and did it provide the address that the balloon float was, uh, taking place at?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
Yeah, it just, it just said it was going in front of the, uh, the planning board of the wrong town.
And, and. Gotcha, okay. Um, and sometimes it's just a bonus that are notified. In this case, I, I thought you mentioned that it was significantly more folks than that.
It was every resident this time.
So every resident of the town perceived notice that the balloon was gonna be in the air? Um, okay, I mean, I would, I would leave that up to the board if the board felt that additional advertisement was needed. Um, I personally, and, and was there actually, uh, when the balloon was in the air, um, had a chance to drive around and take a look at it. Um, and hope that, you know, it was up to sufficient amount of time for other folks to do so as well. I do think as part of the application, um, Vertex will provide and submit, um, copy of photo simulations. So for anybody that wasn't able to get out and visit when the balloon was in the air, um, actually took photographs of where the balloon was visible and then superimposed the tower, uh, on that balloon so that, um, folks could review those documents as well to understand where, where it'll be visible from, what it'll look like from those, the applicable as well.
If I could add to that, uh, the selections for the photos, um, was help, we, we asked for suggestions, people sent them in, but Bill Murray, our consultant, prepared a map with the sites from where they're all taken from because he's more familiar with the sites and topography. Um, and we don't have those pictures yet, but when we do get them, we're gonna post them and they'll be available at the hearing.
And also.
Is that, is that right, Mr. Johnson? Yep?
Yes, definitely.
Yep, okay.
Uh, and also just to, uh, to add to that thread, we, we did talk about the hours of the, um, of the balloon test. And because it was presented in the bylaw that, uh, that twenty-four hours were required for it, uh, but we, we debated it and discussed it as a board. And at the end of the day, we decided that, well, having a balloon test between eight-thirty at night and like six o'clock in the morning doesn't really make a difference to anybody. Uh, and then the, uh, the applicant presented, uh, evidence to us showing that the afternoons tend to be too windy to do a meaningful balloon test. So, um, we had decided as a board to allow the, the time period that was presented. So that was how that ended up happening that way from a, a procedural standpoint. Yes?
Do we get references on this, uh, corporation that's gonna install this, uh, tower? Um, I guess my concern is if they can't put out a public notice with, with our proper name on it, uh, we should have references as to other installations that they've done and, uh.
It's a little subtle dig there, but, uh, everybody's made a typo in their life, I'm sure. Um, and Vertex has been very, uh, successful, uh, recently and, and certainly can provide a, a number of great references. Recently built a, a, a tower in Corrane, another one in, uh, Monterey, number in, in New Hampshire as well. So, uh, absolutely, um, is, is, um, has a, has a number of great references that they'd be happy to provide for.
So.
Thank, thank you. Uh, you know, I've been in the corporate world for a lot of years and, and important notices that get sent out to every, uh, member of the town, uh, need to be edited before they're sent.
Yeah, it was certainly an unfortunate situation because, uh, that went from the applicant and it also did go through a couple town offices and it did lead with that mistake. So it, it was certainly a regrettable mistake and we're all gonna work, uh, work better, even though ultimately it is the applicant,
Thank you.
but we had the opportunity to catch it too and we missed it. Um, on, I don't wanna go too far off the scope of procedural, uh, but there has been a lot of confusion and talk about this project,
So, okay.
so we'll come back to it, yes. Uh, I just wanna go because we're on the same thread. If you could prepare a, uh, an executive summary or something along the lines of that to help the public understand some of the issues uh, that were raised, like the towns you've worked in before and some of these other comments, would be very helpful to all of us. And then moving forward, further comment from the public?
So I thank you for bringing up the card that Vertex Towers sent out that had.
Can I ask, uh, if you can please identify yourself?
Uh, yes, you can, please identify your name and address.
Oh, I'm Sarah May Plord, eighty New Westminster Road. Um, that was one of my questions. I was wondering what that meant, why that was even in that card. So thank you for clarifying that, that that was a mistake. Um, but I wanna go back to the, the balloon test, the twenty-four hour balloon test. And why, why aren't you enforcing that requirement or why did you decide not to enforce that requirement? I know that if you looked at the town Facebook page, there were several residents who were unable to look at the balloon test because of the hours, the constraint of those hours being from ten AM to two PM or eight, is it eight to two? Oh, if you see the comments, the public comments, a lot of residents were unable to see, um, the, the visual demonstration. And then it was very windy during the entire duration of the demonstration. And I was under the impression that, um, I think there was reference on the card that Vertex Towers sent out for that demonstration that, um, if the weather was not good, i.e. raining, a lot of wind, that they would reschedule that demonstration.
Won't you let him answer? Uh, just, thank you. Uh, would the applicant care to answer that?
Um, sure, yep, um, you know, obviously that's the.
But I'm also.
Uh, one at a time, please, we'll come back.
Uh, the challenge of, um, flying a balloon is that, um, you're always trying to pick the perfect weather window. Um, sometimes that's possible, sometimes it's not. Um, in this case, we tried to look at the forecast and try to pick a day that has, uh, wind that's gonna cooperate. That's generally the, the driving factor here. In this case, uh, the decision was made to move forward with it based upon those forecasts. I happen to have been at that, uh, there was a, a, a site walk that was scheduled at the same morning, uh, as the balloon float. I think members of the board, um, met members of the board there and walked the site. Um, and there was times when the wind was blowing, but there was also times when, uh, the balloon was upright and, um. but there was also times when uh the balloon was upright and um I felt that it was uh folks were able to get a good representation of of what that was.
Was it?
And and um, as I had mentioned, um, the the end result of this will be uh photographic rendering so that folks can get a full uh understanding of what it'll look like once it's constructed. So there's there's two pieces of it. There's there's the chance for folks to see it when it's in the air, but then also a a PDF document of those photos with the superimposed hour on.
Thank you.
Was the site walk open to the public or just to the board?
Uh.
That that he's referring to, that he just referred to.
The uh, the site walk was for the board.
Because it was onto the, it was onto the property itself.
Yeah, it is deep into private property.
So it was not like a site walk around the town. It was at the property, at the location where this was, and that is the priv- piece of private property.
Sure, okay. So is the board gonna enforce that requirement of a twenty-four hour balloon test for the town residents?
Uh, the board made the decision on that at a previous meeting.
And are there minutes for from that meeting?
Uh, I think it's when it.
That'll be the next set that Andrew was.
That'll be the next set that comes out. But the meeting is available on YouTube, so it is uh it is available and readily accessible.
And can you ex- so the rationale will be on those minutes as to why you decided?
Uh, the rationale is in the meeting. Uh, I also spoke to it a a bit earlier. So the the bylaw required a twenty-four hour viewing. And the applicant raised the point, which the board decided was valid, that twenty-four hours is not reasonable because there's no good reason to have to fly a balloon at night.
Sure, but.
And then additionally, uh, please allow me to finish.
Okay, I apologize.
The uh, the applicant then ra- brought in evidence uh suggesting to the board that conditions are not reliable in the afternoon for conducting a balloon test uh and that uh the applicant would have ended up with a balloon that was just laying down in the trees in the afternoon because of the increased winds. So after discussion and debate, the board had made the decision on that. So as far as as the time of the the test, th- that's a closed issue. The board had already decided that. As far as the sufficiency of the balloon test during the time that the applicant was told, th- that that's a valid conversation to have and to discuss. Uh, that's um, I don't know if anyone on the board feels differently on that from a procedural standpoint.
Uh, the only thing I would add here is is that the photographic evidence, which we do not have as of yet, I think will be very telling. Because uh the same was, everybody does not necessarily have the vantage point, like for example, you from your property or you from your property or myself from my own property. Um, having multiple points uh in town where photographic evidence as to what the balloon would, how high, how high this tower would be based on representation of the balloon. I think having the photographic evidence in front of us and validating that we do have good pictures uh and good photos is gonna be a very important criteria for us to evaluate uh during the uh dur- during the meeting that we're that we're gonna be having in the future. Uh, and I think it will provide not only the perspective, but it also will provide those individuals who because of work or for other reasons may not have been present uh that day in town uh have the ability to be able to see that. So I think we we we're we're trying to cover our bases. And one thing to to note here, I believe this is the very first time the cell tower is actually being uh proposed for the town. So this is, you know, we're 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 trying this here for the very first time. And I think that with the, not having had prior experiences in this year, we looked at the information and the evidence that was provided to us by the applicant and considered it, if I may say, reasonable at the time in terms of the information that was provided. And therefore, the decision was taken at that moment to limit the amount of time that the balloon would be uh presented. And again, I think we need to also therefore look at the information that comes to us via the photographic evidence and be objective about it from that perspective too.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Ed.
At Blanchard, twenty-three East Comeupon Road, Hubbardston. Uh, a member of the zoning board of appeals and chairman for approximately twenty years for the town. And I'm gonna ask you whether in your application, would you be willing to uh take a look at other sites in our town that would be equally good for your cell tower or are you just locked onto this one particular site?
And the question is to the applicant, I'm assuming, or is it to the board?
Um.
For the applicant.
Uh, were you able to hear that?
Uh, I was, yep. Um, I I believe within that application, there there is some um, there's an affidavit from the um real estate uh professional that was involved here. Um, and and I believe there's also uh evidence that shows that this particular property is unique. And and with that, it's it's the reason it was um cited a a a bit for this project. So um, uh, you know, I I think that uh during the hearing, we'd be happy to talk about the alternatives that were reviewed, but that the uh, we're here to present the application to this particular property.
Mr. Chair, can you hear me? This is Fran Parisi.
Yes, we we can. You're a little muffled.
I I apologize. Unfortunately, I'm listening to another meeting. Um, I've I've been listening to this meeting as well and I believe all the questions that have been asked are incredibly appropriate, um, but more appropriately raised at the public hearing. Your only goal tonight is to prove the application is complete. The uh, the balloon test isn't part of the application. I understand there's some questions with respect to the balloon and we can discuss those at the public hearing, but really all these questions that are being asked and answered are more appropriate for a public hearing. And this is, you know, the public has been notified yet. And so I think any any of this discussion is premature. The the board simply needs to accept or not accept the application is complete, ask more information uh and move on. And if we need a chance to present, and I'm certain that if, when I give my presentation at the public hearing, ninety-nine percent of the questions will be answered. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Uh, let me just go to Mr. Murray first because he's been waiting for a little bit. And uh, to the applicant's point, we are drifting down to the substantive that we're here for procedural reasons.
So I think I'll just withhold my comment then for the public hearing.
Yes. Okay. Uh, yes.
I understand your comments regarding uh uh this not being a public hearing to address so- some of the concerns that we have. Uh, just historically, we did have another application uh prior to this for a cell tower in town. At that time, it was only uh under the auspices of the zoning board of appeals. And now, as I understand it, if I'm correct, that uh this process would go through the planning board and the zoning board of appeals. Is that correct?
Yes, there are variances that are required, so, yes.
So you're not interested in any more public comment as to other sites or anything like that? You'd rather have us all do that at the uh at the hearing process?
Uh, applicant?
Yeah, I I believe that would be the best venue to to get into further detailed discussion on the application.
I do tend to agree with that, just from my political standpoint.
I do too. I'll see you at the hearing.
Thank you. Uh, any, any other comments or con- procedural comments or concerns?
Are we trying to meet with the ZBA together?
Uh, well, yes, we are gonna need to talk about that. Um, do you think now is the the most appropriate time?
Totally up to you. It's simple to forget.
Well, if, well, we need to accept it before that becomes relevant, so, for some reason.
Can I make a quick comment? And and that is is if, and from a procedural perspective, would want to make, wanna make sure
Yes.
that the photographic evidence that is going to be provided to us is a requirement uh as part of the, of having that ready prior or by the time we are entering into the um into the future meeting, right?
Yeah, it's needed for the public hearing, correct.
Okay, so may I ask when, when, when can we have that evidence and make sure that we have it in sufficient time so that not only the board, but also the public can uh have that information uh available to them and that they can review it prior to the meeting with sufficient time? When, when do you expect that photographic, the the photographs to be ready and and available and sent to us?
Yep, um.
Applicants?
Uh, sorry, I'm jumping. Um, that information will be available uh a minimum of two weeks before the public hearing. So if we set the public hearing date, I'll make sure the town has it in electronic format a minimum of two weeks before the public hearing.
Thank you.
All right, um, well, this is not a public hearing, so we don't need to close it. Yes?
Question?
Uh, I'd request that uh if the balloon test is part of the application process, is that true?
Um.
I think it's part of the process, but I think it's the regulations envision that it's conducted as part of the process.
It's a requirement of the bylaw that that be conducted, but it's not.
Not part of it too.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the the balloon test is a requirement of the bylaw, but the photos aren't a requirement of the application 'cause I had to advertise it after I applied. So um, the only reason why the board hasn't accepted the application
Yeah.
is because Mr. Murray found some um issues with the app- original application which we incurred with and we provided that information.
Okay, yeah.
The the balloons are not part of the, the balloon test or the results aren't part of the application because I can't apply until, I gotta put the, I gotta put the balloon after the application. So um, we'll certainly provide that information. I, 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 I understand the board, the board and the public have several questions, but these issues law they resolve at the public hearing.
Understanding that part of the process, I would request that the uh, if that's not part of the application process, that the application process move forward. However, I would request that the board would require another balloon test that was sent to the town of Hubbardston and not another town and that the hours be extended in better weather conditions from eight o'clock to five o'clock in the evening such that people who are working can have an opportunity to see the balloon test.
Right, well, thank you. Thank you for speaking.
Thank you, you're welcome.
Um, it's not a public hearing, so we don't have to close it. I don't know, uh, Mr. Murray, if you have any further com-
You have the vote to accept.
No further comment though, pardon? All right, so do we have a motion to accept? And this is not a special permit itself, it's just the acceptance, so I believe it's just a simple majority.
I, uh, Francis Steiger, I uh would like to put a motion that we um that we accept the application uh as presented with whatever amendments came um most recently and have been reviewed by Mr. Murray so that we can uh then have a special permit, right?
Hearing.
A hearing, sorry.
Oh, hearing.
Yes.
And do we have a second?
Uh, can I make a friendly amendment for the second or do you have to second it first?
Uh, well, go for it.
Go for it. I just think we need to put the operative word substantially complete, 'cause that's.
Yes. Subs- is substantially complete, correct.
Complete. And then I'll second it.
Uh, I will therefore amend my uh motion so that it is uh substantially complete and therefore we should be able to proceed so that we can have the special permit hearing.
All right, thank you. And we have a second?
Yes, second.
All right, well, any discussion? Let's call a vote.
Shai, right.
Lived eye.
Monroe, I. And this is not a special permit itself, so Erica is not up on this yet.
Well, it's right.
Yeah.
Right, you're right, you're right.
So we have accepted it, so that is going to start the clock. And that also means we have to do some scheduling with the ZBA.
Yeah.
Um, we were envisioning that we would have a a joint hearing with the ZBA in order to have the applicant do one presentation and answer all the questions and get all of the public to show up once uh instead of having to do it a bunch of times. Although I believe we were suggesting that um the deliberations, we wouldn't necessarily do that at the same time. Um, what was, what was the thought on that again, Bill?
There, there's no prohibition for that, but you each, you each have a different set of criteria. And there's, uh, usually when you have two boards deliberating together, you get a ton of cross-talk and you diverge from the significant points. Not, so um, it's usually better if everybody hears the testimony straight and clear and the questions are asked straight and clear. There's no prohibition, you can jointly do your your meetings, but it's usually more efficient for both entities to then deliberate independently.
I agree with that. Any, any other thoughts on the board about that, or strong feelings one way or another?
No, I think we just need to make sure that the ZBA understands what we're planning on doing and that we all agree to the parameters on how the public hearing will be held and that the deliberations will be heard.
That's between the two chairs.
Ed, are you still chair of the ZBA?
Correct.
No, I've been off the ZBA.
Um. And Bill, you can't talk to it, so.
Too, too, too many, too many gray hairs to sit beyond the ZBA. But they, they have an absolute timeframe
Um.
that once it's filed with the ZBA, they have to act within hundred and eighty days.
Yep.
Six, yeah, we got all the hearing within sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll have to coordinate that together.
I'll get you, yeah, I'll get you all Scott's information. Scott's the chair.
Yeah.
Um. Are we, are we penciling for the s- third Thursday and July at this point?
Would you have a majority of the ZBA if they're not on it?
Yeah, I think.
We have five members.
'Cause Andy Vaughn probably isn't finishing up.
I.
No, he's still coming. He said he moved, but he said he's still coming and we checked the town council, it's still legal.
Oh, I know it's a.
I just wanna.
All right, bear with me so we can get the schedule.
I ju- I just want to point out to the board, and I have mentioned this here to you previously, m- m- the month of August, I am substantially out during that month and will not be able to attend, so um, because Bill is, uh, you will not be able to participate in this year.
No.
That means that we definitely have to make sure that we have not just Erica, but also Jonathan on in here. I just wanna point that out.
Yep.
If it's in July, not a problem.
So, in order to have time to advertise, we're looking at the the third weekend in July anyways.
Can I make a suggestion?
They're gonna continue. Mm-hmm.
Can I make a suggestion?
Well, what if it gets continued?
Uh, I ca- I think that we should, we should pick the date for the hearing
and then just present invite the zoning board of appeals to join with us for that hearing and they could do it.
and we should have. And then if they can't get a quorum or we, y- you know, we can proceed.
Sure.
And if they don't wanna have a hearing, if they wanna have their own hearing, they can do that too.
Then it's, it's a separate hearing.
Because I'm a little concerned that if we go without a na- a date nailed down, gonna be in August, then we're gonna have problems.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we we have to uh, we have to set it for the third.
July twenty-first.
Yeah, the third Thursday. Um, how does that work for uh the applicant?
It works for uh, that works for us, I think.
All right.
That'll have to be in person too, 'cause Zoom is done by then.
Yeah, uh, and the applicant will also have to be in person too. Yeah, uh, you caught that?
Yep, yep, for sure.
Excellent, thank you. Well, thank you, everybody, for your comments and your patience and for for getting to that.
What's the hearing?
July twenty-first.
Okay.
So, uh, we will be having the public hearing. What was the date of that again?
July twenty-first.
July twenty-first will be the substantive public hearing.
Six-thirty?
Yeah.
Yes.
But do we know it'll be here in this room?
I imagine we'll probably put it on the other side of the building. We'll see, we'll try to get a feel of who's gonna show up.
We're gonna need to.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm thinking we're probably gonna need to be on the other side for that one.
We'll need more room.
But just simply say sleigh building.
Sleigh building, yeah, that's what I do, my advertisements either way.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, well, on the community cable, we'll need to notice that too. There's a chance we're not gonna be in the public hearing.
They just switched up, I think, yeah, sleigh.
Since the attorney.
Yeah, and somebody actually should set up camera over that.
Yeah.
Since they mentioned the two weeks when we would be receiving the photographs, that would mean that they would have it available to us by the seven.
We should build a new store.
Yeah. Yes.
Correct.
All right, so let's.
I think we just wanna make sure that they are aware of that.
I don't know if they're really like that, do you?
All right, so let's uh, let's move along on the agenda here and call that one over.
Can I just ask one question? Uh, how is this coordinated?
Thank you for coming.
How is it coordinated with a cell tower that we were supposed to put up at the fire station that was, was that just for?
Good night. No, it's not at the fire station. It, it is across the street from the, from the power factory.
Uh.
No, no, I'm saying the one, the town.
The community.
Then Mallory can address that.
Yeah, so the regional dispatch communication tower, it's going up at twenty-one Gardner Road.
Yeah.
Um, and they're still moving for it, to the best of my knowledge.
They're working, they're waiting for the FCC to approve the works.
Yeah, yeah.
But but that in any way wouldn't, wouldn't help this whatsoever or couldn't be coordinated together.
It's two different entities. To the best of my knowledge.
I heard talk from people involved there saying they're gonna try, but then I show up, it would interfere with the communications frequencies. So they would have to wait till it's all in place.
Yeah, that, the, the purpose of that tower is primarily for municipal communication, for fire and police, yes, yeah, for dispatch.
Dispatch, right, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, regional.
Bretton Regional Communication is putting it up. I can't, it's our, our agency.
Yeah. Yep.
It's not just Ca- it's not just Hubbardston.
Right.
Yeah, it's split, it's split between like communities, so.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, it's on our town, but on our property, but they own the actual.
Yep.
And they're completely exempt from the zoning process because it's a municipal entity and enterprise.
Yes.
Right.
Right, right. 'Cause the last one that was uh, was going to be put up was gonna be down in the uh, uh, the gravel pits off of sixty-eight uh.
That was a while ago.
Yeah, well, let's.
Oh, twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago.
Well, we're already at uh, at eight, we have a decent amount of agenda left, so uh, I'd like to, like to move us forward.
Yeah, we have more. Oh. I mean, it's. Christopher, we're gonna lose. Christopher, we're gonna lose, uh, William here because he's got to, he'll have to go home, please.
Maybe we'll stop, I guess.
Yeah, I don't believe, I don't believe we have anything else heading into about, so.
He needs to be there.
I didn't think so.
Alright, well, thank you.
We'll see, uh, good luck and go look good, stay healthy.
Alright, good night all.
So, the, the next item is easy to move past because we do not have any new updates on the public education chapter of the master plan.
Thanks. Let's see.
I reached out to Jonathan, and he told me I would have it by Monday, and I have to make it, so.
Okay. So that will become more of an item then. So moving on to F, which is the Massachusetts Attorney General opinion disallowing minimal lot size for marijuana enterprises.
Take care.
Uh, just to update the board and update the public, uh, at not the last town meeting, but the town meeting before it. Uh, we had put an item on to, um, to add some setbacks and add a minimum lot size to our marijuana bylaw. Uh, and the purpose of that was, we're hoping to do a larger revamp of it with the lessons that we learned from going through the applications that we have. So it was really meant as a stopgap, it wasn't meant as a, as a final solution, that's the history there. But what happened is the attorney general reviewed it and the attorney general threw out the portion of it with a minimum lot size. Uh, and the basis for doing that was that it made the businesses more capital intensive and therefore prejudiced, um, historically disadvantaged communities. So, we're, uh, we're left with, uh, a question as a board on whether we want to do anything about that right now. Um, my thought on it is we already have on our strategic list for the year to do, um, an updating of the bylaw anyways. So, I think we just let it ride as it is and we don't necessarily, uh, address that specific, um, section being overturned by the attorney general. I don't know if the board feels any differently, or?
Just has one clarification. So I wrote back to the town council, the, go, these go through the town council, the opinion. And she, she wrote back and she said she believes that the minimum lot sizes of the zone apply. And the reason I asked that is there's always been this fuzzy line between, is it agriculture? You know, cause we allowed agriculture, you wanna grow tomatoes in a quarter acre, you know, it doesn't. And so she said, no, she, in her opinion, the underlying minimum lot size would apply. Which also means if you had a non-conforming lot, you could go through the special permit process, but you couldn't just put a marijuana field anywhere. So I just wanted to, for her, that's her feeling. Then I felt better about our decision to wait until we're ready to really look at that in more detail, that whole bylaw.
Question on my end is, is the implication that this has on how the, uh, bylaw is written at this point in time? And again, the, the big question I have is, is how do we make sure that this gets, um, publicized? Um, more importantly, this is that I think again, and I, I, I made this comment several times before, our bylaw, uh, changes, I think since two thousand eighteen have not been updated on our website. I think there's this mysterious, uh, process by which we need to get these bylaws, uh, publicized and we need to make sure that that, I mean, we have, we have made now the, uh, the ADU, we've made the BES, uh, we've, we've made some changes last year.
I-
Uh, and this also needs to therefore be somehow incorporated, and we need to just make sure that we have the right section of that bylaw that is no longer gonna be quote-unquote valid, struck out. So I'd like to suggest that at some point in time, we as a board review that bylaw, make sure that we are viewing it in our completion. And understand what the implications are in terms of how the wording is of the bylaw needs to be stated. And validate that this is the way that, uh, we can then present it, uh, to the town.
Sounds good. I will, um, I'll schedule a meeting with Lori and Ryan and find out exactly what they need from us in order to get that moving.
Yeah.
Because it is something, uh, that, that we need to address, because as it is now, people have to reach out to you if they wanna get the actual live copy of it, which-
Correct.
This is ridiculous.
Uh, ab- absolutely, and that's just not reasonable, uh, for, for, I, 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 it just puts, puts a burden on our,
man.
Yeah.
on our resources in town, which I don't think is reasonable when, when we can put this online.
Yeah. Yes.
About three years ago before COVID, I had come to the board, uh, because of the laws that were passed at town meeting and asked the board if they would really consider taking a long look at only allowing, um, marijuana growing facilities to be in the commercial zone of Hubbardston. And not in the agr- agricultural residential zone of Hubbardston. And the reason for that was that, um, it's really a commercial operation. I mean, you can say farming is farming, but really I think that when you look at a marijuana operation, it's a commercial operation, and now you're, you're basically allowing a commercial operation to be in a residential district. And I also at that time, just for your, for your interest, feel the same way about solar farms. And we allowed a twenty thousand foot solar farm. So here I am, wanting to move to Hubbardston, and I find this great house lot. And I just built myself my dream three hundred thousand dollar house in Hubbardston. And the lot next door to it next becomes a marijuana growing farm. And the other side has a twenty thousand square foot solar plant. Both commercial operations in my mind. And what is my value of my house lot that I just built my new house on? And that may be an extreme case, but we have enough space in our commercial district to do both those operations very well. I know we can't go back and we have some good solar farms that have been done well. But I would ask the board to look again and make sure. Either that, if you don't come forward and do it in the commercial district, maybe have an overlay district where these could be viable. Cause you look at all the gravel pits down there, they'd make excellent solar farms. They might ex- they probably don't have enough loan to make excellent marijuana farms.
Well, I, I can tell you, we are actively looking at this. Uh, we actually have a grant from, uh, MRPC to look at our solar bylaw that we've been trying to get moving along. It's been installed, we're, we're trying to actively look at that for those reasons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and we're also looking at, um, at the marijuana bylaw for pretty much exactly those reasons. Um, a little difference on it is, is, well, I guess the, the same reasons to, to your point, that there are other spaces uh, other than in the commercial district, like the gravel pits, uh-
Yeah, or expand, or expand your commercial fund, one of the two.
Yeah, there, there are some particularly huge, very rural properties that might be suited for it in an overlay.
Yeah.
But we, we are actively looking at those issues and we, we've definitely heard that feedback, uh, multiple times and are taking it seriously.
Well, I'd love to see you move forward on that, and, you know, I thank you for the professionalism of the board, uh, being here tonight and hearing you take care of these situations, you do a great job.
Well, we're working as fast as we can with nothing but volunteers. Alright, so thank you, thank you for that comment. Um-
Call it the Hubbardston Planning Board militia.
Yeah. Moving next down, uh, the list, and, uh, this is something that, that I brought up and it's something that, uh, we very much should keep track of. It is not currently an issue or a problem for us.
Yeah.
But there are situations where this could become something that impacts us, uh, and it is specifically, um, the special zoning requirements for MBTA adjacent communities. Uh, there is currently a project that keeps getting kicked around, which is the Northern Rail expansion. Uh, and if that was to happen, it could potentially bring commuter service back to Gardner, which would make us an MBTA adjacent community. And under that state law, we would be required to have a district of reasonable size where multifamily housing was allowed by right. So it is not yet something that applies to us, but it is something that we should all be aware of. And if we hear, uh, somebody at one of our training sessions that we go to, or at a town meeting, or really anything start talking about Northern Rail expansion, uh, it is, uh, it is something that should get us to look up from our coffee. Uh, because-
Let's make sure we also indicate here very specifically, this is for commuter rail, not, 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 uh, not freight.
Correct, this is for commuter rail.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know if Bill or Ellis had anything to, to add to the commentary on that, cause there's not a lot to it at the moment, it's just something we should be aware of.
It is a huge club that the state has wielded. So if we are determined to be an adjacent community, chapter ninety-one funds, mass works programs, and a whole slew of multifamily housing, mass housing grants
Yeah.
are not eligible to the community unless you comply with the zoning overlay requirement. The town of Holden, by means of example, Worcester is a MBTA community. The town of Holden is giving up their mass works and all those opportunities, cause they just don't, they're, their requirement was seven hundred and fifty multifamily units on an area no less than fifty acres.
They're giving up the chapter ninety money? Oh my god.
Yeah, and the, the density's huge, it's fifteen units per acre in order to comply with it, so.
Yeah.
And we can't, uh, Hubbardston could potentially, I mean, this is really for communities inside the, the four ninety-five belt that have sewer and water. When you get to where we are and you don't have public sewer and you don't have public water, that changes the perspective. And I think that there's a different calculation on the density, but I haven't looked into it deeply. But yeah, a huge number of communities are, uh, impacted. But you can do an overlay district, you don't have to change your entire zoning. You can do an overlay district, you don't even have to approve the housing, you just have to have the zoning in place. So if nobody comes forward.
But if they do.
Yeah.
If they do.
That's, that's, that's the whole issue.
Well-
Yeah, but again, it's not a forty B either.
The whole, that's- No, we, we understand that, but it has se- serious implications as you, as you pointed out.
It has a very serious implications.
Well, the good news is, is it's not yet a live issue, uh, and it might never be a live issue. But, uh, being the, the, the board that we are, it's ultimately our job to keep track and know stuff like this.
Stay ahead of it.
So I wanted to make sure that, uh, that everybody was aware of the key things to watch for. Um, uh, that potentially means it becomes our issue, so we'll, we'll be happy for the moment that it's not.
Yeah.
Can I say that two cents?
Yes.
Um, so, I will think gravel pits quite a bit. It's one of my, yeah, um. And I do think that if you're gonna do multifamily, you've got over a hundred, almost a hundred fifty acres up there that are gravel pits. And they're not completely destroyed, I mean, they're, they're workable. Uh, and we had tried to put, we've been having this senior housing on the fifteen acre town part of that chunk, which is the gateway to the Marinelli property in the back. And I wanted to point out to the public that the, what's stalling that right now is the groundwater cleanup. And fifty thousand dollars was appropriated at town meeting to get that done. But I think as we finish our master plan and we look at our, the land we have and the land uses, that would be the place to be able to zone multifamily.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the Marinellis, who have a lawyer in Boston who would really work with that and be happy to see it. Because it, it, it's hard to restore that land as single-family houses, a lot of restoration needed.
Mm-hmm.
So it's a, it's, it's, it isn't likely to become a subdivision anytime soon. It isn't actually likely to become a solar field, as part of it, one field was sold out as a solar field. But there's no, the grid has to be built out to take that power and it's not there. And the Marinelli's attorney told me they think it's, cause I said, why don't you do that, there's one there, right? And they said they think it's at least ten years away. Now that's also been accelerated, maybe with some of the energy initiatives.
Mm-hmm.
But I really think we, we ought to look at that carefully, and also if you're gonna do commuting from Gardner, that's the place to put it. It's right on the Gardner line, alright, it's where people would want to live. So maybe we can give more attention to that.
It's in the aquifer favorability district.
It is, yeah.
Which also probably needs to be revisited.
Yeah.
Well, I think, yeah, we, we send out land and have Bill study it and he comes back and, you know, cause it's Hubbardston.
Yeah.
So that's my, all I wanna say.
So it's definitely an issue for us to keep track of, and, and I agree with the thoughts that if, if it was something that was to come to pass, that probably is where we would be looking. Because it is the obvious answer, cause that's, that's the point of it, is to try to put it as close to the commuting, uh, station as you can, so.
Uh, quick, quick question, and you may not know the answer to this here. When you say adjacent community, it affects the whole town geographically.
Yep.
Not a-
Yeah.
A-
Nope.
Not X number of miles into the town to the adjacent community, or a perimeter, say for example, a radius, I should say, uh, from where the potential commuting sta- commuter stations are.
No, it becomes a requirement for the town itself, yeah.
The whole town.
Whole town.
We, the, the whole town doesn't get zoned in, just an area of reasonable size needs to be zoned for multifamily by right.
No, no, I understand. Okay.
So, you know, to control that would be providing an overlay district.
Which is the, therefore the overlay district, okay.
Yeah.
Can zone it, to go with it.
That's- That's exactly what we'd want to do.
Yeah.
Alright, so let's, uh, let's move on because we're, we're getting there, so we're into, um, old business, uh, which is the, uh, the farm accessory use. Uh, we're working on that, uh, the first draft is actually on my desk, although I'm going back to the drawing board a bit. Because as we saw from the AG, apparently lot size restrictions that aren't in line with the underlying zoning could be seen as being adverse to, um, historically disadvantaged parties, so we have to pivot a lot on what we were thinking about that. So that's currently the status of that. Um, we're probably gonna be looking at having a draft at some point in July. So, we're getting there, we're close. Uh, for how big of a project it was and how many stakeholders are in, we're close. Uh, the next one is proposed town center zoning bylaw, uh, and, uh, map amendment. Well, it's a town cen- center overlay district amendment. Uh, that's currently in the hands of the EDC. Um, because that's the way the grant was originally structured. Uh, I met with Whitney and I met with Ryan, uh, and under the assumption that I eventually become, uh, if I was to become chair, we talked about how we could all move that forward together. Now that, um, now that I have become chair, we're gonna meet about that again and we're gonna figure out how to move that forward. Because doing something with the, the town center zoning that makes sense, I think is helpful to everybody for the long-term plan and the EDC really wants to see it, so.
Especially with the new roadway coming through.
Yeah, especially with that, because it, it really is a, a good opportunity for us.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that is currently in the book. That's another program where there, that is another initiative where there's a grant tied to it from MRPC. Um, currently the ball is in MRPC's court, they owe us, uh, survey and some other information, it hasn't come back yet. Any questions or concerns?
Does the, uh, town, uh, the town center zoning allow for, uh, cell towers?
So our cellular, uh, overlay is defined by the town center zoning.
With that, yes.
So, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, with additional parcels.
Yeah, it, it, it-
encompasses the whole thing.
And, and the access to that cell tower would be through?
Yeah.
This is probably for a hearing question, but-
Yeah, it, it would be through Brigham, it's through a different zoning, that's why they need to get the-
No, but the, the access to the cell tower itself would be via Main Street?
No.
No, it wouldn't, that's why they need to get the, uh, the variance from zoning.
S- the ZBA. It comes in through Brigham Street.
So they have to get a variance over other people's land to do it?
They have the right of way, the issue is that we have a bylaw that says X, uh, you can't, access has to be through your frontage.
They have the right of way.
Isn't that the main problem?
That's the main problem.
And this access is not through the frontage, cause there is frontage on Main Street.
They can't get it from Main Street, there's a big wetland that goes down and then up, there's a big swamp back there.
Huge wetland, yeah.
So the short answer is, is yes, it does potentially implicate some of the wireless communication, uh, overlay.
But due to that topography and all that, those are reasons for you could getting a variance.
I think that they meet the, the criteria, yeah, yeah.
The cri- criteria.
Ultimately for the lot shape, topography, shaping land and all that, yeah. Alright, we're, we're getting deep into the hours here, so, uh, that's-
I'm gonna leave, so you go.
We only got one item left at this point.
See you guys, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Take care. Uh, so status of minutes, we actually already talked about that, so administrative matters, which is why, um-
Again, I, if I may, just go back to that for one quick second, I just wanna point out, it's not just the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. I do wanna point out that we are missing lots of minutes that are from prior years, okay?
Yeah, I'll work on it. I'll take a look at that, yeah, I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, that's why I actually put it on here, was to try to track the missing steps.
Sure.
Okay, so then we're on to administrative matters, which is approval of fees to places' associates. Do we have invoices that are currently out?
Was that from last time?
Is that from last time, or, or did you put it on because of the CPC?
It might, because I just need you.
We have, I don't know.
I didn't see any in the, I didn't see any in the drive, but it would explain why you're still here.
I just need you, I know that you- Yeah, the Z, the Z- Yeah, the C P C.
I'm still here because I printed two sets of the cell tower plans, full size, and you guys frequently
Right.
lament that you do not have full-size plans, so they are for you.
That's true.
Wow, we very much appreciate that.
So whomever wants to take them, I, and, uh, of course I can print more, 'cause I charge it for them. And you charge him for them.
Oh, we can pass them around and take a look, that'd be great, we can have Mallory come and peruse them.
Yeah, we, we definitely will. Alright.
So Bill, you have a bill out to the CPC money, but we don't have to approve that, do we, with CP?
We can, they have it.
No.
I just wanna discuss the access right here.
You have it, so, I think it's, I think it was a artifact from our last agenda, but perhaps.
Dispossess, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I, I issued the payment.
Okay, so there are no-
I did get a check from the town on the way.
So this is the access, um, for you.
So there's no open invoices left, so any remaining public comment, we have no remaining public.
Of the access.
Yep.
Oh, it's actually there.
Public.
Any public comments online?
No people online.
Yeah, okay.
Are you ready?
There are no remaining people online?
But their, their property extends into Main Street, pull way up near, right?
Uh, so that means we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
And what's the public say?
I make a motion to adjourn.
We can entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'm sorry. We, we were, we were distracted by pictures.
We're looking for a second on a motion to adjourn?
Uh, yes, I, I second the motion.
And let's have the vote.
Lived I.
Steiger, I.
Monroe, I.
Thank you.
And we are adjourned at eight twenty-two.
Good job.
Excellent. Good job.